Well, that's the focus of the station language. I think that's our passion. Do you sign up for it or is it free?
Free. Absolutely.
All right, Mr. Collins will talk with us about the wayfinding plan. We use words that are very...
I'm not going to use VeloWeb or Trapazoidal in my presentation. This is kind of an interesting segue on a much different level, citywide, to talk about providing direction to folks in your community. A wayfinding system is a network of signage that you want to direct pedestrians and drivers to destination points in your community, right? That you would hope by drawing interest to different attractions that perhaps you could increase the interest in those and maybe increase the number of folks that are going there. As we get a little bit further into what's a short presentation, one of the common elements of the wayfinding program that's real interesting is the most effective wayfinding signage programs are that they're simple. You don't put a lot of clutter. It really, really has a very, very specific and direct purpose within that system. The typical wayfinding goals, if you're trying to direct them to destinations in your communities and evaluating other communities that have developed their own programs, some of the common destinations that they will identify through their wayfinding signage will be typically city-owned facilities and attraction sports facilities. Others might even include school district locations as well in there. The other significant element of the wayfinding signage, and we've got some examples to show you later on, is it's not just about providing the direction, it's also through that signage, through the design elements, to begin to extend the branding elements that you've already created throughout your community. There would be opportunity to go from your trail marker program to Texas Star Golf Course as a destination to have some consistency between those design elements that are incorporated into the signage. But the whole point is that through that identification of that common themes through that signage, when you get into Ulyss, you'll go, I know that I'm in Ulyss because of some of that branding that's been established. We've got some challenges within our community, and it's no different. We were visiting with Southlake yesterday afternoon and with North Richmond Hills and Hurst this morning about some of what they went through in creating their wayfinding programs and said, you know, over the years, different signage has gone up at different times, right? And at different times in the community's life, you may have had different branding elements that you were using. So the challenge is to bring all of that together. It's not to be critical about what you've done in the past. This just creates an opportunity for perhaps a consideration of bringing those all together with some consistent branding that hadn't been done before. So sidebar, one of the challenges is one of the communities that went through that said they did a complete inventory of all the signs in the community and they didn't even realize that they had many of the signs out there and they didn't realize or appreciate how long they had been out there in the community. You know, another element of the wayfinding when you're trying to identify the destinations is to be able to establish through really, really clear objectives, who are you trying to communicate? Who are you trying? Where is the placement of that signage going to be that can maximize the communication to your citizens? You know, you've got different stuff going on in your community. You've got a network of elementary schools in relationship to neighborhoods. You've got a relationship of neighborhoods that we have to the park system or to the aquatic center or whatever. Who are you going to gear that message to? Are you going to orient it to the pedestrian that's using the trail or that's walking the network sidewalks? Or is your audience going to be those folks that are driving in their cars? There's a whole lot of things to think about and you can make it very, very complicated or you can make it real, real simple, but the point is who your audience is, who you're trying to communicate to through the wayfinding program. Let's be very clear in what we're trying to do with that. So the components of an overall wayfinding signage plan will be obviously to develop what that branding or that marketing identity is going to be. The considerations that I didn't at first consider is you've got state, you've got roadways that are controlled by the state, so the signage that's developed, when you get off of your city art materials, are obviously going to have to be designed to a Tech dot standard. And the cool thing about that is that with so many of the communities around us having already done that, we've got templates for exactly what Tech dot will accept, you know, based on the speed of the highway, what size of lettering and what font, and I mean, all that kind of detail. All of that's already been worked out through Tech dot and they're very, very familiar with that. Other elements that would be contained within your wayfinding plan is obviously to identify the specific sign locations and the pathways you're trying to identify for those folks driving in their cars to go to the various locations. There are communities that have done this very, very extensively that have taken wayfinding signs from just, just to identify major destinations to incorporating those same designs into intersection locations. It can be very, very expensive and get very, very thorough. So where you're wanting to implement these, how many of you are trying to do, is obviously going to be driven by budgets as they, as they always are. And then, of course, another key element with the wayfinding plan is to create what kind of design specifications and colors associated with those branding themes. The communities that we've contacted, they've all used consultants that have done very, very extensive work and have taken months and months to develop these comprehensive programs. I don't know if that's going to be necessary, Mr. McKeever, not to get something like that. There are a lot of good examples out there to follow. Some examples that we lifted up that y'all might be familiar with is North Richmond Hills and Hurst actually created a joint program. Their RFP included both cities program on there. They share so many major art materials that it just made sense for them to go ahead and go in together because so much of what they recognized they were trying to bring people to beyond the city-owned facilities were regional entertainment. And that's what they really wanted to draw folks in. And you can see that the two signs that we've got related to the Hurst and the North Richmond Hills respectively have the topper of Hurst. And the distinction that's trying to be made is that on that sign that would be in Hurst but would be in that color blue, that's taking you to a destination in North Richmond Hills. So that when you got into North Richmond Hills, they have their North Richmond Hills topper, obviously, and all of their directional signs would be in blue because that's their color. Hurst's color would be in green. You know, with Arlington's program, y'all may notice when you go to either the Cowboys Stadium or to Ranger Stadium, from wherever you're going, they've assigned the maroonish color or red, it shouldn't be maroon, it should be Ranger red associated with the stadium and then blue with the Cowboys. So anywhere that you see their wayfinding signs with that color backdrop, that's giving you information either about the Ranger Stadium or about the Cowboys Stadium in particular. So we wanted to kind of give you an introduction. Y'all are familiar with the wayfinding signs in other communities. We've been able to get all of the information from those respective cities to a level of detail of RFPs that they've issued to actual construction costs for the program.
Yes, sir. On city-owned facilities, is there a charge from Tech dot to put a sign there? For example, Tech dot highways, with you're a mall and you want to have a little wayfinder sign, you know, Midway Mall in Sherman, that's $5,000 a sign per year. Now, is there something, when you're combining city-owned and retail or privately owned, what's the Tech dot cost on that? Because it's really expensive for just a retailer to put their sign on a Tech dot highway.
I don't know. I just know that there's conditions established through Tech dot on use of their right-of-way. And there are all the typical site distance, there's all kinds of design specifications for whether or not there are breakaway poles. All of that is detailed in specifications. We just haven't read through all of that yet. There are, in each one of the communities' programs that we've read through, there is a separate budget established for the acquisition of easements for that sign.
Yeah, when we were doing it, you didn't acquire anything, you actually had to pay. And actually, it wasn't Tech dot, it was one of their companies that they farmed us all out to. And it went up every year. Now, seven years ago, you need $5,000 for one sign, like I said, senior center, a sign that size going in each direction, $5,000 each one. So I don't know, maybe they cut a special break when you're doing it as part of just in this pathology. It'd be pretty heavily expensive when you get on the Tech dot highways.
We've been asked about this several times, so to connect ever through this kind of produce, thought and say, if we're not, if we're not by department, what I mean, if this year is some, if there's an interest that somebody will work towards, and it's called a lot of...
I don't, you know, I like it.
And most retail centers will pony up the money because it absolutely pays for itself. It's just whether, we have to pay the same amount too because you're going to have a lot of money if we start doing as many, we have so many Tech dot highways surrounding the whole city.
But what, though, I've seen the Hurst program, I would have said they're not, if Hurst, City Hurst is funding, I don't know where. Now, whether Northeast Mall pays, City Hurst, I don't know. I don't think there's the fees to talk about.
Well, I know when I was designing, Northeast Mall was paying a lot of money to Tech dot for their wayfinder signs. And they're the ones, when they did it, that's when I was able to get it from Midway Mall to Sherman.
If their interest will explore it further and...
Yeah, I mean, I think I made very clear, I mean, you go down Highway 10 and you go down Highway 26, and I mean, I think it's just good for people to know it's long in their city. I mean, it's just a different reference.
That'd be a good practical application as well. I would have thought like a weekend, I noticed that they were using some of their very nice signs to identify us with what I'm supposed to, and it was very, very obvious to me. You could have asked that, they would know it was bad because they were in State One water district. You can believe right from the start.
Say, in Southlake, their first phase included 67 signs and Hurst and North Richmond Hills respectively have around 25.
No, I think certainly it's their play part, you know, it's kicked off. You know, you put some in South Hills, it's amazing how many people you talk to that don't know, for example, I would call things, there's lady in hardwood that's on one of our boards that didn't know until a few months ago that Buzzies Taco, for example, existed because it don't go south of hardwood road. So some of that is good. I suggest we add Buzzies, but just to let people know that we, or seniors under, or whatever, are getting interested in pursuing.
Oh, absolutely. But I would also suggest strongly that if we put private business on there, that they fund the cost. If not, then you're going to get the guys away. Hey, you put that on, you didn't put Laniico on. And it is, like I said, it's a pricey proposition, but hey, you get, like I said, people in South Ulyss, we know wayfarers there.
Yeah, in one of my earlier slides, he had a really good example of what we sometimes call, they did the sign, you get off the freeway to Texas Star, and then on the other one, so you get off the freeway to go and you don't know where it goes. Yeah, it's got to be systematic for the location there. Okay, cool, we'll follow along on that. Tell you that, I don't, I kind of wondered that because I've seen those signs until you just said it. I didn't, it never occurred to me, it was all just hills and greens, so it may be something somewhere you do. Well, they just ran out of one, like, yeah.
I just found this on the street somewhere I was driving here. Well, it's not, it's not so different than some of the street signs in Ulyss where the ones they found are are blue, I think, because they're private streets versus others, other streets are different colors. There's a designation, or whatever they are. See, that's what the impact on the door. So they're different than yours. But we can have colored signs throughout the city, around the street.
Things to go over with you, we'll start out with Lake Park's. Stephen and I were exchanging texts just a few minutes ago. We were getting a frantic email from Zach that some of the documents that are necessary for us to be able to file a final plat that will enable Dave and Buster's to close on their property tomorrow had just been rushed to us this afternoon. So one of the things that we do for the developer, try to be customer service oriented and quite frankly, to kind of stay in control of the process, is we'll actually file the plats down in Tarrant County, get the reporting information, make sure we buy the stuff and everything that she needs, and that's just a nice service that they appreciate very much. So Dave and Buster's will be closing tomorrow is the game plan on that. This is the building 21 on the Tween Roses and I did it again, I forgot, yes, Raising Paint, I forgot that last time as well. You can see with the end users there on top, Don Sheffield, our building official, will tell us that they're about three weeks away from turning that over to the end users. The commitments on the part of the master developer is they do all that they do on the exterior and the landscaping and do some level of construction interior to the site and they'll turn it over to the end user for them to finish doling it up and putting their racks and doing whatever it is that they can, they need to do in order to get that store open. But from these pictures, you can begin to get a better appreciation for the architectural design elements that have been included in the vision that y'all adopted as part of the plan development ordinance, other of the entryway features that are coming along very, very nicely, again, consistent with the vision book that y'all adopted. K-Hawk Manion continues work on there. I think that Howard told you during his Capitol update at your last meeting that all of the infrastructure roads, et cetera, associated with the Phase One of the residential development has been completed. You can see the maestro screening walls that are being constructed. We actually had a reconstruction meeting with K-Hawk to begin to identify the special conditions that were adopted in the PD with respect to the architectural design standards and interior finish out. And Don had an opportunity to go over some of the things that they tried to do to expedite the process for the builder. In a subdivision of this size, 127 lots, I believe it is, they said that they will probably have between eight and 10 different building plans. So what Don invites the builder to do is why don't you give us 10 of those building plans upfront and we'll go ahead and go through a plan review for you and identify everything that we think perhaps could be adjusted to meet our local codes and ordinances. And that way, when you are selling that individual home with that model, all we're really then reviewing from that point forward is how it's been engineered to fit that individual lot and whatever minor modifications. And that really helps from the time that they bring in those individual building construction plans for a single lot to get that under construction as quickly as possible from the time that those folks have agreed to buy that home. Gateway Court, virtually all of their infrastructure is in and they're beginning to grade to bench the lots. They've already got the for sale signs out. The folks had been directed to go to Starlight Court to see modeled homes, but all of those are now sold, of course, so they continue to be directed to River Crest at Main Street and North Main Street in Mid-Cities for the sale of the Gateway Court. Dominion continues their very, very strong progress. Don told me before the meeting that they have now pulled 27 permits out there. They are just anxious at getting those built as quickly as possible. Their sales are going very, very strong, so strong in fact that you remember in our ordinance that there's some wiggle room to work with the developer on weekends to let them do some work that's not creating any noise. These builders across the city would love to be able to work six days a week if they would be allowed to. They're just selling that many homes and they would love to be able to construct six days a week if they were permitted to. Progress is being made at the NRP Urban Loft out at the Riverwalk. All the rough plumbing's been installed, they're going to be preparing to begin to pour more foundations for the individual buildings. And the HEB Family Dentistry, they're on the north side of Harwood West, the Albertsons continues to make good progress. Don, I didn't ask you, Steve, I'm not sure how much longer they're going to be doing that, but they're substantially completed, obviously, with the exterior work associated with that. And lastly, there have been many questions for many months from the city manager about when this construction would begin. They had to work through some new drainage plan issues. They have made some modifications that beat the technical requirements that quite candidly would save them some money. And they have now begun the construction. They have got a construction loan that will enable them to continue this project until it's completed. So that's good news for them. And we can, in the future, simply report to you the progress that's being made instead of an explanation on why that's being done. That's all we have, Mr. McKeever.
But they're going to have to show some continued progress, but our point is that they don't want that. I would have a concern on that, that they can't have enough. We can't blame too much because our project set out for several days but not certain months. That's weird, I'd be like, man. Any questions on mine from the end of? Still in front, how, remember him to get a, like, over?
Yes, sir, they should start that working bridge, it's the first of September, and that will be mostly in September early on COVID. We have made both connections to the circuit road and that will be, they'll be ready to ride on if we want to sign it too in the next few days.
Yeah, those circumstances, conditions out there on the service road have been pretty drastic for the last few, so you know, give them a, a tough situation. This, this is going to seem kind of like a jewel show tonight, but I'll sit down.
Bad that I didn't know we were going to find a super cool word night, so. I guess I had to choose a word, it would be balanced, but you know, those accounts would like a balance sheet, that it's equal to credits, balanced budget. So I guess I'll go with that, even though it's not unusual or exotic, wayfinder or travel. I'll kick in my last name. All right, let's talk about the report for the period ending July 31, 2014. This is the 10th month through fiscal year 2014. And as you can see here, at the end of July, fund balances for the majority of the governmental operating and debt service funds has increased year-to-date. Most of this can be contributed to a stronger economy and most revenues have been, have been collected year-to-date since we're 83% of the way through the year. Funds that have decreased in fund balance year-to-date include the Hotel Motel Fund, which has delayed collection schedule, as well as deceased asset and grant collection funds, which revenues are not consistent and are, nor are they predictable in any way. In the proprietary funds, the Debt Service Center, the Drainage Fund, the Debt Service Center, the Service Center, Drainage Fund, Texas Star Sports Complex, and the Rate Stabilization Fund have all shown increases in their fund balances year-to-date. And the Water, Wastewater, Recreation Class and Texas Star Sports Reserve Debt Service Funds have all had a planned drawdown for one-time funds this year. The Water and Wastewater Fund, however, is running lower than predicted. Due to rainfall as well as conservation, consumption of water is, is running over 10% less than we had originally expected. Budget projections show this in your, in your budget books that you've already received. But between budget savings and reserves, we should be able to stay in line with year-end projections for the Water and Wastewater Fund. All three of the internal service funds are planned to draw down fund balance during fiscal year 2013. The insurance fund you'll see still has an increase showing year-to-date, but year-end accruals have yet to be processed for that. Overall, we began the year with $40.5 million in fund balance and after 83% of the year, or 10 months, we have combined fund balance of 43, 45.3 million. Capital project funds have been using funds for major projects as planned but are still showing an increase year-to-date due to escrow payments. Overall, most revenue categories, as you can see that are highlighted here, are coming in better than expected. However, as mentioned previously, charges for services, especially those from the Water and Wastewater Fund, are not meeting our original budget expectations. As of the end of July, operating revenues are $3.7 million greater than last year and $1.3 million greater than the budget expectations year-to-date. And overall, operating expenses are less than prior year by almost $3 million, mainly due to capital purchases, and current year budget expectations of $2.7 million or 3.38%. Looking at the individual funds, the general fund has collected revenues of $30.6 million, which is 90.3% of the budget, of course, again, 83% of the way through this fiscal Property tax revenues exceed both prior year collections and current year expectations as seen by, as denoted by the black line. Sales tax collections remain strong this year. Right now, we're running, running 7.3% greater than last year year-to-date. And you'll see fiscal year-to-date sales tax revenues exceed both prior year collections as well as budget estimates for the current fiscal year. Monthly court revenues vary from month to month. And revenues collected this year are still exceeding prior year collections as well as current year estimates. Development revenues also vary widely from month to month, as you can see, but are also exceeding prior year collections as well as budget expectations. General fund expenses year-to-date total $27.5 million or 75.6% of the appropriated budget. Car rental tax collections also continue to come in strong this year. Revenue's year-to-date exceed both prior year by about 4% in estimated budget collections. Now to the Water and Wastewater Fund, normally we are in the season height of, of water and wastewater consumption and therefore the revenues. But as mentioned, we're running below expectations by a little over 10% of consumption. We still have collected $15.2 million year-to-date, but this is only 73.5% of the revenue. Again, any shortfall would, you'd expect to offset the savings and reserves. Expenditures year-to-date total $15.8 million or 74.6% of the budget. For the Texas Star Golf Course. For the Texas Star Golf Course, year-to-date, the numbers of rounds were estimated to be two-thousand-six-hundred-and-six rounds higher, um, than they currently are, but the average revenue per round is strong, seventy-four, forty-seven-point-seven-five, forty-seven dollars and seventy-five cents. The decline of rounds has resulted in overall shortfall of golf revenues of thirty-nine-thousand dollars, but when compared with the increase in, um, food and beverage revenues of a hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand, the revenues exceed budget year-to-date by eighty-four thousand, compared to budget. And operating expenses, however, through July exceeded budget expectations, but it does leave the facility, I mean, dare say tar, or even with. Year-to-date revenues at Texas Star Sports Complex exceed budget expectations by twenty-three-thousand, but expenses also exceed the expectations year-to-date by thirty-four thousand, leaving in eleven-thousand-dollar shortfall year-to-date compared to budget. However, as you can see, we're still, year-to-date, a net income of thirty-nine thousand. Do you have any questions?
We're watching the water flows, but, I mean, you don't, you just look at what we're experiencing. Sometimes if you use the floor last, we got about eight and a half ring. I don't know about anybody else, I turned my, my system off, just for a week, so, uh, you don't expect that, obviously. When you have, we haven't, we haven't, like, the rain, well, both raining, but it's part of this week, so, it's just, for those who can't, we've, we've had it for years, we make these presentations, the water, it's gone on itself, so, it's already been bottled. Most years, we, I think, well, they say it's October, but it's just keep going out more October with sales tax. Sales tax, you're even, you've gotta buy a certain amount of stuff, but you don't actually have to ever water them, I mean, when it comes right down. And this year, we've got collision of, of, not only unusual weather, but also the very efforts we've been trying to raise, to produce water consumption, which is significant, we back up now. It's not a good water year. Al, how are we doing on water?
Actually, the, um, here, here at David Allen's work area, we're at sixty-seven percent, and last year, we were sixty-six percent. So, it's, it's pretty close there. This is the first actual month since I've been here that the Dallas reservoirs are higher than the Port Worth reservoirs. So, and of course, it depends on where the water falls and how drains into those, into those lakes, but, um, Richard Chambers is sixty-nine percent, a year ago, it was sixty-seven percent, but three months ago, it was almost seventy-four percent. So, as Perry said, the conservation efforts are working, but it doesn't help much on revenue and, uh, but we don't have much recourse other than try to conserve them. All I've got.
I wanna mention, I think it's something on water, that is, you've seen, the city ground, they're flushing their system. Not a time we have flushed our system for various reasons, and inevitably, we get calls, so why don't you catch that water? Well, it sounds real good, but it, it, it just doesn't, it, it doesn't money out. It, it, it sounds totally, I don't know what tanker truck, oh, this out and out.
Maybe.
So, six thousand gallons of water is about, at our highest rate, is thirty dollars. You can pay for the diesel fuel for somebody to kind of load up six thousand gallons of water. So, there's no way you can catch that water. Uh, I, I've had calls from very passionate residents, but just cannot believe that that water's running, but it's, uh, it's the reality, it doesn't money out, it never will, nor can we load small trucks. We, we, we take water in our trucks a little bit, but I don't know whether you, you're still hold five hundred gallons a style?
Two thousand.
Two thousand, two thousand seven hundred. When we flush, we're flushing many thousand gallons in, so, it's, uh, it's a heavy, it sounds good, it will work, but we don't.
It's kind of like fire trucks, I can drive them over there, and they put it back out.
Okay, let's see, uh, it's just nearly, uh, let me, uh, let me go through a few agenda items, and then we'll get back up after dinner. Only twenty-nine, but it's actually high, so, it's, it is, and mention video footage to contribute to the report, and that will be item number one. Uh, item two, presentation employee month of the month, Michelle Pross, my colleague, always, really, really good lady, good selection. How long she live your life?
One year ago this week.
She was a great addition. Uh, item number three, presentation preparation for a claim September seventeenth through the twenty-third, it's Constitution Week, uh, and someone will be here to receive that. Uh, number four through eight is consent agenda. Uh, number four is authorize us to execute an earthquake agreement from the city on TRA, that is, I don't know, still talking to you about tree. Uh, number five is a bid zero-one-one dash one-two, this is for purpose and waterworks and vehicles company, this is for, uh, utility repair materials. Question, comment on that? Is required in sewer repair materials, that's what we found. Item number six is bid zero-one-two dash one-four for replacing wastewater mains in portions of the Midway Park issue. Uh, Al, anything you need to say on that?
Al, sir, uh, Mr. Hughes is here, he, he can answer any question.
Mr. Hughes.
Pardon?
Mr. Hughes.
Mr. Hughes.
Mr. Hughes, man, it's David Hughes. You got no clue. David, David knows more about our sewer lines than anybody around, so, if you have a question on sewer line, with David, you can. Any questions on that? Item number seven is Resolution fourteen dash fourteen forty, seeking designation and management agency for wastewater collection and treatment. Mr. Barker, you wanna say something about that?
This is just a, a requirement as part of the, um, funding that we're looking at for the Texas Water Development Board, because that is federal funds, there's a federal designation as, as a management agency for wastewater collection. I think treatment doesn't change anything that we have done in the past, or we plan to do in the future, it is just officially designated us as such.
Item number eight, could you mention? Item number nine is authorize the mayor to execute instruments for the TRA easement to build, is probably discussed, probably go, question's clear. Item number ten is public hearing for a deal on corporation budget. Uh, Ms. Jewel will be prepared to make a full presentation on that. Item eleven, which is the approval of that, of the corporation budget. Item twelve is public hearing for the city's operating capital budget. And Ms. Jewel is prepared to make a full presentation on that. Of, uh, the, uh, item thirteen is the ordinance adopting that budget, we hope. Item fourteen is to allow a binding property tax revenue increase reflected in the twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen budget. It seems illogical to most people, but it is the process required by our legislation. We will consider the actual violation of that. Item fifteen is for public hearing for that tax rate, forty-six-point-seven-five reduction of a quarter cent. Ms. Jewel will do a good presentation on that, and she will get the fair to the presentation next Tuesday, not on the second, so, kind of, just depending on how many people there, because they have long presentations she makes. Any questions you need to make for the books there? Item number sixteen is to announce the time, date, and place of vote on the tax rate. Be very careful when we make that motion, it includes each of those items, regardless of how often you do that. Item seventeen is first and final reading ordinance twenty-thirty-six, meaning chapter thirty, this is on our water rates. Then, item number eighteen is a public hearing, first and final reading ordinance twenty-thirty-seven, approved in the lobby of a special assessment for Lake Park, yeah, of improvement district and prison service assessment. Right in there, that is, uh, you have.
Eleven-point-eight, two-nine.
Eleven-point-three. So, I'll put here, rest of everything.
Eight, eleven-point-eight, two-nine.
Okay. Let's see, not sure. Again, just to remind everyone that it's only the most properties that are combined within the boundaries of that Lake Park, of improvement district, which is basically development, is, uh, upon request, uh, and to define those properties to enter an assessment on a client basis. Hopefully, it's a law of curbs, it will go away, that's the back-up to, uh, backstop to, uh, that we have for this person.
Perry, just help me understand, how do we collect that, those?
It's actually the property tax.
Oh, the property tax?
We own a contract, we can't, to collect our own taxes, and that's another collect of the kid, as a, or it's, it's basically the same rules, taxes, they don't, they're not paid, it's, follows the same process of collecting.
It's treaty exactly, the same, the taxes are a special provision, it's hedged, it's allowed, it's a contract, and the other can't do such as challenge to collect this, and it's a version of that, the tax code, so, same rule, it's just like, really same. Is it a one-time deal, or is it yearly, or yearly?
Now, you all, what, what was that?
Um, two years ago, we were at sixty, over sixty-two cents, this year is currently a little over fifty-eight cents, and then, so we're looking at eleven cents for next year. And let me clarify a little something, Tarrant County's ready to collect this for us, we've got the contracts that we're already talking about and everything, but since we only have twelve property owners at this point, we're still gonna build that this year, but they are ready to do it next year.
Kind of water, is it still good?
All right. Any questions on that? It's, it's, so, we can figure out the, the question next dinner. Uh, Mr. Bynum?
Get a fine.
So, like, our dinner, uh, Tommy, I don't know, and, uh, so, John, it's about to be there, next, uh.